You're live.
Welcome to everybody to the November 23rd, just kidding, December 1st, Capitol City Council Meeting. May I have a roll call?
Yes, Councilmember Bertrand. Councilmember Kaiser.
Here.
Councilmember Peterson. Vice Mayor Story.
Here.
Mayor Brooks.
Here. Before carrying on to the rest of tonight's agenda, Chloe, would you like to share a favor?
Yes, thank you Mayor Brooks. Welcome to the special Capitol City Council meeting. In accordance with California Senate Bill 361, this meeting is not physically open to the public. Council and staff are meeting via Zoom and there are several ways for the public to watch and participate. Information on how to join the meeting using Zoom or your landline or mobile phone, along with how to submit public comment during the meeting tonight is available on our website, cityofcapitola.org, and on the published meeting agenda. The public can also livestream the meeting on our website. As always, the meeting is cablecast live on Charter Communications Cable TV Channel 8 and is being recorded to be rebroadcast at a later time. Our technician tonight is Kingston Rivera. Thank you Kingston for being here and thank you Mayor Brooks, that's all.
Thank you Chloe and thank you Kingston. If you can all please join me in the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which is standing, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we're gonna now move on to our next item for additional material. Do we have any of this evening?
Mayor Brooks, yes, we did receive four public comment emails regarding item 5A, the outdoor dining ordinance. In addition, two staff provided items for that same agenda item were received. There was a survey and a usage data report included and distributed earlier this week.
Okay, thank you very much. And for any additions and relations? Great. So now moving on to oral communications. This is disallowed since for members of the public to address the council on items not on tonight's agenda. Do you, would anyone from the public like to speak?
Mayor Brooks, I do not see anyone with their hand raised on this item and I don't have any else.
Okay, great. Well now move on to staff and to the council comments. We'll go ahead and begin with, I'm gonna switch it up because I only have one more meeting. I'm gonna start with council tonight. I'm just gonna go crazy. Council, do you, does anyone have any comments? Councilmember Bertrand, was that a hand raised or was that a no?
That was a comment.
Okay, Councilmember Bertrand.
Yeah, so I had fun this afternoon walking around Capitol and a friend visited me that I used to work with. Hope you don't mind the story because it was kinda great. And he said, yo, why, why come to Capitol all the time that I don't know anything about it? And I said, okay, why don't I take you around Capitol and the area in general? And show you all the areas that you will enjoy to visit. And the river walk, I went up to Deep Hill, I did the stairs which we barely made, went out to the Wharf and talked to Palash and he heard about all the, the instant out to the, the bait shop and, and you know, just had a great time. Of course, I went to Yale's and showed him all the neat restaurants. And he says, wow, I'm gonna come with my wife next time I come to Capitol. So I thought that was a good ending to the story.
Oh yeah, thank you so much. Any other council comments? Okay, then staff, do you have any comments to give me?
Just two items I wanted briefly to mention. First, I want to apologize to councilmembers, many members of the public who were on the last meeting. We obviously had a technological meltdown. There's been a hardware failure in city halls that really cut our internet and really blew that meeting out of the water. So apologize to that. We're on, we've identified the problem and figured out how we can do our best to avoid it moving forward. Secondarily, you may notice that this meeting is being live cast on YouTube. This is part of our transition to our new agenda management software. We're not on the new agenda management software yet, but we're testing it out this meeting. Just wanted to get everyone's heads up.
Thanks so much Jamie. All right, if there's no other council staff comments, we'll now move to item 5A and this is our outdoor dining ordinance. The actions as we get started here to consider planning commission recommendations regarding the draft outdoor dining ordinance and either these two options provide direction on the draft ordinance and consider schedules for first reading and adoption are introduced by title only, waiting for the reading of the text, the ordinance of the city council of the city of Capitol repealing and rescating the municipal code and amending the municipal code as listed related to outdoor dining in the public right of way. Or number two is to consider options to extend, terminate, or modify the temporary outdoor dining program currently scheduled to end on January 3rd. Now go ahead and turn this over for staff for presentation in a second. Councilmember Kaiser?
Thank you. I do have to re-queue because my employment at Paradise Beach Grill that don't have a financial concept. Thank you.
Thanks so much Councilmember Kaiser. We'll see you in a little bit. And now over to staff.
Okay, thank you Mayor Brooks and council. Can you see my slide okay?
We can.
Yeah, great. This evening we're going to go over a draft ordinance or two draft ordinances for outdoor dining. Let me make my slides move forward. There we go. This is broken into two items this evening as the mayor introduced. The first is the draft ordinance for a permanent outdoor dining program. And then we'll also be asking for decisions from the city council related to the temporary outdoor dining ordinance, whether or not to, not ordinance, but emergency order, whether or not to extend it due to expire on January 3rd, 2022. With that, I'll give a brief overview of our outdoor dining to date. In the spring of 2020, the council had an emergency temporary outdoor use permit order. In April of the following year, 2021, the city council directed staff to develop a program for permanent outdoor dining program in the village. In June and July, we came to council first with two surveys, one from the public and whether or not there was support for a future outdoor dining program and also the restaurant. And both came back positive in wanting, the majority supported a future program for outdoor dining. And then in July, we talked about key program elements the city council would like to include in the future ordinance and also they allocated $10,000 for prototype design. In October, I took the first draft ordinance to the planning commission. At that hearing, they gave initial feedback on the ordinance, but asked that we notice all residences in the village. So we went kind of beyond what you typically do for a draft ordinance. Noticed all the village residents. We also placed staff public notice on every outdoor dining deck in the village. So, and then they continued adhering to November 4th. On November 4th, there was good turnout and the planning commission provided input on the draft ordinance. But they recommended essentially to delay the adoption of the ordinance until the prototype design was complete. And within that, there were three significant changes that they made within their recommendations. So the first significant change was to remove the sidewalk dining as inclusion in the ordinance. Also to modify the locations of the street dining. And in terms of timing, as I mentioned, to delay the ordinance with prototype design in place. The reason for this, we've wanted us to ensure that the best design fits the ordinance and that angled parking, we look at the sign for angled parking, make sure that fits the ordinance and to ensure that onsite bicycle parking requirement can fit within a future design. One other thing the planning commission brought up at that hearing is with new dining decks throughout the village, they asked that staff at a later date really look at the parking that's associated with the residential parking within the village wholly without parking permits and whether or not we should be modifying what areas of the village people can park in, residents can park in. So not tied directly to this, but a future project. So before you leave this evening, there are two ordinances. The first ordinance is the planning commission recommendation which modifies the sidewalk. They remove the sidewalk and modify the locations of the street dining. And then the ordinance two, which is the planning commission recommendation, but it has the original city council directions for the location of sidewalks and street dining. So within the sidewalk dining area, I'll go over the difference between those two ordinances. Ordinance one, the planning commission recommendation, removes all sidewalk dining. Ordinance two, allow sidewalk dining in the mixed-use neighborhoods, mixed-use village, community commercial, and regional commercial dining district. And then within that mixed-use village, it would be limited to Monterey Avenue and the Wharf. And then for street dining, within the planning commission recommendation, it's limited to Esplanade and San Jose. And the ordinance two reflecting the original directions of the council was limited to Esplanade, San Jose Avenue, Capitol Avenue, and Monterey Avenue. And the timing is also listed on this slide. The components of the ordinance that are the same between both ordinance one and ordinance two are all listed on this slide. So the number of total parking spaces would be 25. There would be two bicycle parking spaces required for every other space removed. One thing the planning commission added was an option to page with an in-lug program and to identify a future common space for bicycle parking within the village. In regards to sound, the planning commission still given and amplified sound in all music. Originally, it was just a provision, they provided an angle side sound, but they also added all music. Signs, one business identification sign and a many sign will be allowed for related to two square feet. They added guidance for acceptable materials and they added a new requirement for activated space. There was concern walking through the village scene, many of the spaces not utilized Monday through Friday. So this would require a restaurant to be open a minimum of five days per week in order to utilize those spaces differently set when they're open. New requirements were added for stormwater and utilities. Maintenance standards were added related to trash, the upkeep of plants, keeping them alive and keeping areas clean. Within the administrative policy, it was now required city council to authorize any modifications to the admin policy. And there originally was an allowance for a commission money use permit to have outdoor dining on private property. This section was removed. If the council would like us to look at that further, I would suggest that we spend more time on that. Really focused on the outdoor dining deck. And if we're gonna look at outdoor dining for private properties, really needs more staff time to make sure we have the right review criteria in there for future ordinance. So early on, before bringing this to planning commission, I worked with the coastal commission and they reviewed our draft ordinance. And how we have it written now that went to planning commission, they were in support of, they provided edits in the ad that are finalized into the ordinance. Their direction initially was to reduce the overall amount of outdoor dining from the original COVID-19 permit. We had over 50 permits in the village, we're happy with the 25. They also suggested the program be temporary to ensure that the goals were within coastal access. So they suggested between one and five years, the current draft is for free. And they suggested dedicating funds from outdoor dining to reinvesting coastal access and that is also included in the draft ordinance. And as I mentioned, there's prototypes designs which are proposed as administrative permit within the new ordinance. The coastal commission will allow a blanket coastal development permit. So it would be applicable to any restaurant utilizing the prototype design. So it would be administrative approval. The blanket coastal development permit, once we have a prototype design, would have to be approved by the planning commission. And then it would be, it would apply to all properties within the coastal zone. There's also an administrative policy that was drafted and attached to the staff report. The administrative policy provides direction on how the city will leave the right of way. It includes the details of how that facility managed, the allocation of space through the lottery system and terms of relief. So here's an overview of what is in our administrative policy at this time. A lot of it is repetitive from the ordinance, but the lottery system will be planned within the admin policy. The fees are, the front fees will be at zero. We would not provide construction to business, but would provide free prototype designs if they choose to use them. The charge for rent would be $3,400 per apartment space per year. Encroachment permit term would be three years. The maintenance requirements are the same as what we have in the draft ordinance and then safety requirements as well. So me went out and in preparation for the last meeting and passed out surveys to all of the restaurants that currently or previously utilized the temporary outdoor dining. We got results from 16 of the 18 restaurants in the village. And I want to let you know that today, one of those results changed because of the new variants that's out there. So originally, we had heard from the Sambar. They called today and have changed their line that they would like to participate. So these are updated findings from what was sent out earlier in the week. Within the temporary program, currently participating, there's 11 that responded and all 11 would like to participate. Originally, the Sambar said no, but now they are interested in the extension and continuing to participate. We did not hear from Taco's more than half on this one. For the permanent program, I've updated this as well. Originally, the Sambar was in the no category and it moved over to definitely and now are interested in the space around the future. So in total, for definitely, we got over, we asked, would you participate in a future street dining deck? And if so, how many spaces would you like? And for definitely, we now have a total of 19 spaces. Likely, Paradise Grill and People My Heart said likely, but Capitol Wine Bar, their response was in between likely and unsure. I moved them over to likely so we would have accurate totals, but no that they're between likely and unsure. So, and they said three of five unit spaces. A higher number gives you the maximum number that might maybe ask for. So they, those totals, we could be up to 14 for likely. And then unsure with Capitol Bar and Grill, Veldes, and El Toro Bravo. El Toro Bravo didn't list a number of spaces. They're related to the sidewalk program. And then Margarita Grill said no. And for the sidewalk dining, we asked, would you participate in a future sidewalk dining program? In that survey, El Toro Bravo said definitely and Reef Dog on Capitol Avenue said definitely. And then Kathy Moll at Deli said likely. I just want to note that Reef Dog Deli, Reef Dog is located on Capitol Avenue. And right now, the draft ordinance does not include Capitol Avenue as sidewalk dining. So if it was the will of the city council that said one item, that would have to be amended in the ordinance. So for next steps, your options tonight are to, you can provide further directions and modify either of the draft ordinances. If, if the item that you're modifying is something that the planning commission has not yet considered, then it would have to go back to the planning commission for review and recommendations. So for instance, Reef Dog Deli, if there was a, if the city council wanted us to add that to the sidewalk locations, that actually was considered by the planning commission during their hearing. It would not have to go back to the planning commission for further review. But if there was something new that you wanted to consider, that they haven't reviewed, it would have to go back to the planning commission. Your second option is the city council, your original timing. So you could have, I'm sorry, I should have updated the dates on that from the last meeting. But you could hold your first reading this evening, December 1st. And then your second reading would be December 9th. And then we move forward with coastal commission certification in March. By March and then a blanket coastal development permit, hopefully by April. And the last option is the planning commission recommendation for timing. We could delay action until prototype design is in place and reviewed by the planning commission. And likely have a planning commission recommendation on the ordinance in April, city council adoption in May. Certification mid-summer process of blanket CDT is placed by September. So in the, their recommendation was to continue the outdoor dining, the temporary permanent process through that adoption process. So this evening, I'm not gonna reread the recommendation. I do want to let you know that the first item we're looking for direction on is the ordinance, followed by a direction on what we should do with the temporary outdoor dining program. And I have this slide available for you if you would like it when talking about the different ordinances. And I can type in modifications that you'd like, if you'd like, if that helps. So with that, that concludes my presentation and I'm available for questions.
Thanks Katie. Councilmember Peterson?
Thank you. So just to clarify, because I know it gets confusing between temporary and permanent. What we're talking about right now is the ordinance for the permanent outdoor dining program, correct?
Correct.
Uh, great, okay. So in considering that different businesses had different numbers of spaces that they might be interested in using and we would be using a lottery program or a lottery system, how would that work? So if we were to draw a business's name from the lottery and they say, I want five spaces. So from there on out, do we let every other business that we draw from that lottery know, okay, now there's only 20 spaces left? Until we get down to the last two and then whoever's the last to be drawn, we say, do you want two? Because that's all you get. Is that essentially how that works? Or, I'm just trying to determine if it's, if we're giving them the option of how many spaces to choose, then based on a lottery system, eventually the last couple of people to be chosen only get what's left. Is that, am I correct in that thinking?
You know, I'm gonna walk you through an example of the lottery because it is, it's a little bit different than the way you're explaining this.
Okay.
I'll share my screen again. So in this example, I'm showing that in the first column, the total requested numbers, so I put 27. I didn't base these numbers on some of the information we got back from the applicant of the businesses. So these are just funny numbers that I put together. They're not accurate at all. So the requested number is based into 27. And if we had a lottery and the maximum number that we could allocate is 25, in the first round, we would allocate up to two spaces per business. So everyone in the first round would get up to two spaces. But if Mai Tai Beach had only requested one space, they could get their own. And then we'd be at 15. Then we'd hold a next round of lottery in which there's only five businesses that are looking for additional spaces without 20. So we would pull and everyone would get one of those five. And then we, at that point, we're at 20 and there's seven left, or five left. So then we hold the third lottery, essentially, and there's this scenario. They each get one more. So the, in this scenario, where Taco's ran out past for six, they only ended up with four. And realistically, they could have only asked for five, but so that's how it would end up. Every round, we'd add another one. And in this example, we show 33 spaces and so, and there's more than the, more than 12 applicants. So in the first round, we only give out one per business. And then in the second round, it's sort of like you get that, you only give out 11. So only some restaurants would get two, others would only get one.
Got it. Thank you. It does. Thank you. I love that you had a slide like ready to explain this question there. Perfect. My next question is, how long do we expect construction to take for the prototype? I know we don't really have everything figured out for those yet, but do we have any kind of baseline assumption of how long we would expect construction of one of those to take?
So at this point, we're, we're hoping to start the design process in January. And I think the design process will at least go to planning commission twice and then we'll have to have the blanket CDT. So I think we're looking at a couple of months for design process. In terms of construction, I'm hoping it's within like a month, they could be constructed, if not faster, but.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Mayor Story?
Yeah, thank you Mayor Brooks and thank you Katie. I have three questions. The first one involves the planning commission request to delay the proposed ordinance until the prototype design are created. And I know you stated the reason, I wasn't quite sure the connection between the ordinance and those prototype designs. Maybe explain how they would ensure, one of the reasons was they would ensure the best design. And I didn't quite get how that relates to the ordinance. And also the angled parking and how that relates to the ordinance. And, and toward the, the practical. So I was wondering if you could expand on that and also confirm, we have the ability to amend the ordinance at a later date? If we felt it was necessary due to the prototype?
Sure. So, yeah, the planning commission really wanted to make sure we get this ordinance right the first time. And they, they wanted us to, you know, their recommendation was really to, they were supportive of extending the temporary ordinance or temporary order in order to have a prototype design developed so they could review the ordinance again. So they, one item that was brought up a couple of times in the speech, bicycle parking. And when the bicycle parking requirement that for each space utilized, each parking space utilized, the restaurant will have to provide two bicycle parking spaces. The bicycle parking spaces can either be located in the street dining deck design. It could also, they have ample private property, they can put it on their private property. Or they can opt in to the in-lug program, which if they didn't want it to utilize part of their dining deck area, they could pay future fees, we need to come up with depending on where the, the community, outdoor dining, shared parking for bicycles would be, I figure that's fees, they could pay into an in-lug fee to actually have it offsite centrally located. So that came up at the second meeting in option. So it's kind of having that option almost alleviates that issue of whether or not the design will work with the bicycle in the prototype design because they could always opt in to the in-lug parking idea. But the planning commission was concerned of how would bicycles fit with that requirement? Two bicycle parking spaces per space. So if there were three parking spaces, they could provide six bicycle parking spaces. There's concern with that with leaving out the space for the outdoor dining. And then the angled parking is unique for Capitol. There's not many areas that are dealing with angled parking and outdoor dining. And it does, it changes the layout and they just wanted to make sure that the ordinance aligned with it. We really don't have any standards in the ordinance that say that all dining desks have to be at a 90-degree angle or a 45-degree angle to the sidewalk. So there's nothing getting in the way. So there's nothing getting in the way of a future prototype design being angled or a 90-degree angled. So I don't really think that really insives what a future prototype design could be, but they were hoping to be the design first, to make sure that it was the best design for the village practice to use for our building. Yeah, and that's.
And just to follow up with that, Katie, our ordinance, I'll call that ordinance number two, which was the original ordinance. And it currently, in its, its admission, provides for, for bicycle parking, it provides for both possible options of being built into the prototype or the in-lu program. So we would have both of those sold available to it, once we're, once we're approved the ordinance?
There's actually three options for them. They can build them into the dining deck, they can utilize the in-lu, or if they have private property that's available, they can also put it within their own private property.
Good, thank you. I also wanted to, I think it's a general question about the current temporary parklet and whether we, do we have insurance requirements and indemnity agreement with the businesses currently?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Yeah, I was asking whether we currently have insurance requirements and indemnity provisions in our temporary parklet program?
Yes, so as part of the temporary parklet program, prior to issuing a temporary COVID-19 permit, we required each, each restaurant to provide us with their insurance documentation, identifying the city up to $1 million, I believe. So that was done for every, every outdoor dining spot that was activated. That requirement was a breakthrough, even the temporary COVID-19 permit.
Yeah. And my last question, Katie, is about the parking permits for village residents and for village business employees, you know, in our two large parking lots behind the hall. Do we have on the books or currently have provided for any kind of reduced or eliminated parking fees for village residents and village employees?
I may need assistance from, yeah, my co-author. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I can answer that. Yes, we do, we do have a employee permit parking program that I believe is under $10 a month, and I think it's $6. But a lot of those, you purchase a permit with a business, that has been employees there, and then what they do is they get that permit and they can park in the lower lot, and it's like $6 a month.
Chief Aliam, does that program, we take into consideration the fact that this parklet program will be used, or there's a number of parking spaces in the village?
Well, this, the program that we currently have, was put in place prior to that, and so it's really to just offset any, we're just trying to really offset any employees that are parking down there to create more parking for the visitors, stuff like that. We offer a similar program with the junior guard parents club, where they get parking as well during the summer.
Does that program apply to village residents?
It does not. So they have a, we have a separate village parking, the resident parking permit program, that's another one that's depending on how, how many option parking places that they have, and there's a lot of category, so that's separate.
Okay. Yeah, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, can I have one more follow-up from Mayor Story? You had asked about the ability to amend the ordinance in future, and yes, we can always bring back amended ordinance if there were any issues to the prototype design and the ordinance was drafted.
Excellent. Thank you.
Can I expand on that just for a quick second? Do keep in mind though, that the ordinance requires coastal commission certification, so the process to amend the ordinance is more complicated than other ordinance amendments. Do recall though, that there's also policy attached to this, that sort of implements the ordinance, and the policy can be changed without coastal commission review. So in the future, the easiest thing, changes to make would be to think that are contained in the policy, and consistent with the ordinance, we can change the ordinance, it's just not a, not a streamlined process as amending the policy.
All right. Thanks for that question. Thank you.
What's a member for chance?
Thank you. I like the discussion about residential parking. This issue is brought up, a couple emails that I think people have received, it's not personal conversation, so people who've been in my house, as a matter of fact, about the ability to get parking spaces that they were promised at some time, and they are registered in San Jacinto. So the conversation, as we all know, is difficult for parking spots, and San Jacinto's brought up, maybe, you know, our programs in the lower parking lots could be, you know, amortize that rule a little better, or notices making it easier for them to notice other options other than just right on the esplanade parking areas. The issue of responding to the design and having a business jump into implementing that design, and, you know, hiring people and stuff like that, that's a concern to me, because this is not the normal thing that a business takes on. Some might be better than others, like Delta just does a lot of remodeling, for instance.
And it sounds, Councilmember for chance, if I may, I just want to, we're still on questions, and I just want to make sure you get your questions.
I have a question, and I'm just trying to lead up to it. Thank you, Mayor. So my issue is that timeline. So can city provide some options for them in terms of maybe contractors that we know, or some development along that line? And a little bit longer than a month, it might take them longer to figure out who would do the implementation of a design that they like? That's my first question. And my second question is, these design guidelines, are they, are they meant to be built exactly as designed? Or are they sort of like guidelines that sort of provides an envelope for how something would be built within the guidelines? That's my second question.
Sure. So your first question was who would do implementation of what the restaurant would like? And within the ordinance, we have it set up two ways. You can get an administrative permit for the prototype design, and/or you could create a custom design that goes to planning commission for approval. Within the prototype design, because we'll answer your second question, that design will have an overall look and feel that's standard, but there may be differences in like shade structure, the design of planter boxes. There, we had a good example that I actually, I don't think I have a slide on it, up in Los Gatos, they did three prototype designs that were very closely related, but the lighting system was a little bit different, the decking was a little bit different, and the shape structures were different. So we can add some variety there, but really, we, we're trying to create a, have a design that people know what to expect, so not too much added variety into the prototype design so that we're not surprised it worked as well.
Okay. I appreciate the idea of uniformity and the concept that you see when you come to Capitola, but I'd also like to see something that gives the ability of a business to give some originality, something that's unique to the shepherd business. So is that possible? And how do we decide if some of those suggestions that a certain business might want to follow would be acceptable?
Yeah, when we get, when we start working through the prototype design, we can keep that in mind and make sure that that's a possibility. But also, they'll have some flexibility, they'll each be allowed to sign, they'll have the ability to have different furniture, they want to have umbrellas, they can really, between like, and their own specific planning type, they can make their space unique through all those actions that come to play within outdoor dining area.
Another question, a little bit preparation for my question there. So one of the things I'm familiar with is that some of the businesses don't take up a lot of the parklets that they have right now, they may not have enough customers, maybe they're not open as many hours as we would wish. Just to put this out there, do you think there's a possibility we could consider a shared parklet, so that two businesses are next to each other, they can share the resources, recognizing what I just brought up? And maybe you don't have an answer for this, but this might be a possibility for some restaurants.
That is a new suggestion. There's, you know, there's areas on San Jacinto in which they share a ramp to the designated area, but really will be, they'll have to go through the lottery system, and if there were two restaurants that would want to partner, we really need to look at the specifics of that and make sure there's no issues with, you know, the Department of Alcohol Beverage Control, UCD, and we would just really have to look at it, make sure there's no issues tied to that concept, but it's a good idea. If someone were proposing that, we definitely take a look, try to allocate that.
Yeah, I just wanted to put it out there, it might make a possibility for a business that herefore wouldn't be able to do it for whatever reason. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. Katie, I have just a few questions. When you surveyed the businesses, were they aware that the question was revolving around the permanent, the permanent option, and that they would actually have to pay for it?
Yes, so in this survey, we outlined the parameter of the program that's being looked at. So we, we made it very clear that it would be in the ordinance, and the program explained what the cost would be per space. And I think, and they were appreciative of that at all. I think they've all been keeping track of what's been going on at the planning commission and city council. So we knew we outlined exactly what was going to be required in this new ordinance, and those responses reflect that information. Have a good night.
And was there any discussion during planning commission, and I'm thinking more specifically around the esplanade, if a business, let's say that's in between two of the other businesses does choose not to participate, how does that functionally work with parking? You know, how, what, tell me a little bit about that.
Yeah, so in the ordinance right now, it's drafted that you'd have, you'd eliminate to those spaces that are directly in front of your restaurant. There is some flexibility in the ordinance for staff to look at unique situations and have some flexibility. We have a little bit of flexibility built into the ordinance for that, but overall, I think that's where it's going to, you know, there may be gaps between parking areas, but we'll have to figure that out as we move through the process.
Okay. And was there any discussion at planning commission or concerns about that on the esplanade or anywhere else? That there would be Zeldas, two spots, pizza place, two spots, you know, that weren't being utilized? Was there any discussion about that?
You know, during the hearing, there was not discussion on that, but I will tell you, during the temporary outdoor dining program, I heard from a lot of the restaurants that when, the first time we removed some spots, they, the restaurants actually really liked that, because there's more opportunity for people to pull up, pick up food to go, and then leave. So there was, and also in filling out the survey, the San Bar changed their input, they provided some feedback to me on that as well, is that they were kind of in flux or undecided at first, because they also think there's a great value to their customer's feel to drive up in front. So I think it, I think the system can work, I've seen it in a lot of different jurisdictions where you can pull up in between, parallel park in between, and I think it's, Pacific Grove has angled parking, and they have just random decks along the street, they're not all connected, but it's really easy to park next to them as well. We would have to think about, one item that was brought up, actually a planning commission is that, like opening your door and designing to make sure that you can open the door if you park in the space directly next to angled parking. So that will have to come into play with the design.
Okay. And so just for clarity, if those types of conversations occur during the prototype process, creating that prototype process, and then should something occur, that it doesn't sound like that is going to work, we need to amend our ordinance to then have to go back to coastal commission? Is that, how that possibly works?
Well, right now, there's nothing in the ordinance that would prevent us from making sure that the prototype design is one foot off of a, you know, located a foot back from the parking space next to it. So there's nothing like, in the ordinance, that we need to be amended in that scenario. And there's also nothing in the prototype design that would limit whether or not we have a 90-degree angle or an angled parking spot, so.
Okay. And then lastly, you know, we're surveying current restaurants, and with just how businesses are, and we see what businesses open and close and shutter, do we have anything written in our ordinance about change of ownership and, you know, should they not want to participate, or if they have some sort of outdoor dining that they want to dissolve? Do we have anything around that, those types of situations?
So that will be in the administrative policies of how we deal with leases and how it would continue, you know, the option would continue to the next owner, but if they wanted to, I know on a pressure state, that would be in the loop.
Okay. Those are all of my questions for now. All right, let's leave this to our attendees.
I have one question.
Oh, Councilmember for chance. Excuse me.
Yeah, I forgot who brought up the issues with interference with parklets, but when, you know, I did a couple inspections, and I know that there was one parklet where obviously a car had hit the edge, and so there could be that issue too. I didn't think about the opening of car doors, if it was a, you know, a surrounded parking space, but that's another issue. I don't know about reflective case and all that sort of stuff.
So we'll build in safety features to the prototype design, and we'll also review to make sure that parks are safe within a custom design.
Okay, so let's go ahead and move this to public comments. If you'd like to make a comment now, you can raise your hand by clicking on reactions below, or if you phoned in, you can dial star nine or star six, depending on if you have a cell phone or a landline, or you can email us directly.
Mayor Brooks, we have a couple attendees wishing to speak. The first one is, hard to find, mispronounced, your last name, Randy Zoncha.
Okay, you have three minutes to speak. You can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Okay. Hi, I'm a longtime visitor to Capitola over several decades, and I really like Capitola for its beach. And I understand the COVID thing going on, but what you've done, what you're proposing is to dramatically reduce the square footage allowed to the public in the village, which is really an anti-COVID measure, because you're squeezing everybody together. But what I really don't understand about this is, I like the way Capitola was before, and you're trying to make these changes permanent. We don't know if COVID's going to be permanent, and I occasionally rent from beach house rentals, and we like, like it to be quiet at night, and if there's people sitting on the sidewalk dining into all hours, that's going to increase the noise also. So those are the downsides. I'd like to keep Capitola the way it was, I'd like to make plans, this could be a temporary thing, and make plans to return to what worked before. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
We have Linda Smith.
Okay, thank you for Okay, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak once again. I did send quite a narrative that I plan to speak on the twenty-third, and I trust that you have had a chance to read it, so I'm not going to read it to you tonight. I am including some of the points, and something that I noted from Katie's presentation, November twenty-third, is that what we're calling permanent is really a three-year trial. It's not permanent, it has an exit strategy, and what we have now is really working. It includes both sidewalk and street dining areas that are bringing vitality to the city and a chance to recover for our businesses. And people are going to continue to pervert, prefer to dine outdoors when possible, especially in the, in the good times. I frequent the village and I eat at the restaurants with my husband two to four times a week, I'm down there a lot. And the, the survey is a good survey, but it didn't, it would not have captured most of my visits to the village. And I think between eleven-thirty and two every day, especially on Monterey Avenue, you've got a lot of people that are down there eating out. So I just want you to know that I think those numbers are probably on the low side. The other thing that I've recently noted is bicycle parking. We have some centralized bicycle parking areas and they're rarely full. So scattering them out through the, the village area would probably really add some clutter, so the in-lose parking fee that has been suggested in the ordinance is a really great idea. They might want to, they might want to just replace that requirement. The ordinance should refine the existing program and provide an exit strategy, which I think it does. Draft ordinance number two, I would really like to see you guys go forward with that. Worst case, extend the temporary all the way to the end when, so get them through the next season. But if you move forward, it looks like the timeline might allow them to actually react and have a higher quality parklet structure down there in time for the next season. So I guess I'm asking for you guys to really move forward and direct the Planning Commission to go work on the prototype, and thank you for considering my comments.
Thank you. Flaring, anyone else?
Mayor Brooks, I do not see any other attendees with their hands raised to speak on this item, and we do not have any emails on this item.
Okay, so we'll bring this back to council for further deliberation and comments. Who would like to begin? Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you. So I first want to say thank you to the Planning Commission and for everyone who has emailed us and provided public comment tonight. Lots of, of time and effort have gone into the consideration, as well as staff, thank you so much Katie and everyone else who worked on this. A lot of time and effort's gone into consideration of this permanent program, or as mentioned in public comment, a program that would have a one to five year trial period. From what I've heard so far, I'm prepared to support ordinance two. I, I don't think it's appropriate for city council to, or for the city in general to suggest a contractor for the prototype for the businesses to use. And, and just to clarify, now's not the time to make comments related to the temporary program, correct? This is just for the permanent one? Okay. Just for the permanent one, I'm prepared to, to move forward in supporting ordinance number two. Katie, would you mind clicking through to the next slide just to make sure that I'm seeing everything that ordinance two includes? I think there was like a couple after this to have this thing, three, I mean, what, what you were showing, but there was like three slides of what you were showing, right? Sorry, I didn't mean to make things more complicated than they, than they already are with this item. Well, for the sake of discussion, while we're, while we're getting, getting the slides pulled up, I guess I'll just start by saying I'm willing to make a motion to support ordinance number two.
Vice member Bertrand?
For now.
Oh, for now, all right. Councilmember Bertrand. Councilmember, you are muted.
I'm sorry about that. Yeah, I'm willing to support this motion, and I do have a question, Kristen, so to get to the permanent, are you willing to accept a temporary until we get the prototypes?
Well, we're not there yet, so I have comments on the temporary program, but that's why I asked if I should discuss the temporary program for now, but I think if we're only discussing the ordinance related to the outdoor program, or excuse me, the permanent program, then, then for now, my only comments are that I support ordinance number two, and that the permanent program technically be a three-year trial.
Okay, thanks Katie for putting up the slide. You know, especially, I'm worried initially, even though I talked to people on city, can we comment on, I believe, right there? So I was worried that they were going to cut out Capito Avenue, so I see that's in there. I do would like to thank city planning, I think it's notable that they've gone down and talked to all the businesses and done multiple surveys. I've talked to business owners who were quite happy that Katie and staff came down there and got their comments, like, I think that's exemplary, I, I think it's very much indicative that we have a dedicated staff, and thank you very much. When this first came up originally, I guess there was a lot of names here, but you know, we've talked about it so much, and city staff has been so involved in talking with residents and businesses, that these comments have sort of been modified and people are beginning to understand, you know, after they've seen it, how successful it's been. And to paraphrase what Linda Smith said, what we have is working. And what better confirmation do you have when you see people enjoying themselves coming to the visit Capitola and, you know, just making it the place that is very inviting? And I do understand that it's not quite like what Capitola was, but it's the new Capitola, it's, it's a Capitola that many people are now enjoying and, you know, businesses are finding it a little bit easier to stay open, which is really, I think, a great benefit. So I'm glad to support this motion, thank you.
Vice Mayor Story.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Brooks. And speaking to the motion, as I understand it, in order to allow sidewalk dining on Capito Avenue, we would have to include that in the ordinance, since we have a current business that has a sidewalk dining little table. I just want to confirm whether or not that is the case, and whether Councilwoman Peterson would be willing to add that to her motion, if, if it's not the case.
Can you clarify, Vice Mayor Story, I'm looking at ordinance two and it says that Capitola Avenue is already included. Oh wait, I'm sorry, I was looking at free side dining, or sidewalk dining. Yes, yes, I'd be willing to include that.
Right, well, well, thank you for that amendment, and hopefully the legislature will accept that.
I accept.
And if, and so, yeah, I would certainly support that option. Mayor, may I make some general comments now about that? Thank you so much, and, and I also want to start by saying how much I appreciate the work that the Planning Commission has done, the staff has done on this, you know, very complicated and significant transition to our village businesses. But I want to tell the Planning Commission that I respect their work, and, and for the most part, you know, I think our motion is in alignment with their recommendation, except for the issues about which street, or eliminating certain streets and eliminating sidewalk dining. And those in general, I just think, I don't know that we should categorically eliminate the Expanade and, and not start that, I mean, Monterey and Capito Avenue, some of our, I think, deaf parklet activities have been on those streets, and as well, you know, with the sidewalk dining, they have, you know, worked and functioning well. Obviously, we need to, as a city, need to make sure that they're, they are accessible, that they're continued to be available. But, you know, El Sol Bravo, I think, has done very good job in their sidewalk programs, and, you know, they are limited in being able to move out into the street. And, and looking at El Sol Bravo specifically, I think that if, in order to improve that design, if, you know, the, the trench stand that's in front of their business and the bench that is in front of their business could be moved, that would accommodate more space, both for them and for the pedestrians. And also, you know, I, the use of the barrels in front of El Sol Bravo, I think, also unnecessarily takes up sidewalk, sidewalk space there. But overall, I support, you know, Capitola moving outside, and I think in general, we need to do that from a public health standpoint, and I think that, you know, obviously the city has a financial need to ensure that the businesses in the village are, maintain their viability and thrive. I think the consumers moving forward, especially that we're still in the midst of the pandemic, but I think even afterwards, the consuming public is going to want to have more outdoor dining options, and in order to continue to attract visitors to Capitola, we need to provide those options in order to stay viable. And there's also the interest here, because I think, well, you know, over the forty years that I've been a resident here, we have attempted and strive to have people move their parking into our parking lots. And I think this is now a meaningful way to be able to attempt to do that. And, and as a part of that, I would like to see us look at providing incentives for the residents and employees to be able to have permits to park behind City Hall, and at a much reduced cost, since their parking options are now going to be less than what they once were. And my, well, I guess my other comments are about the timing and the temporary program, and I believe that's going to be a separate perception and motion, so I'll revert it until then. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Story, thanks for playing by the rules, everyone. I know it's hard not to intermingled the, the two items. You know, my, my comments regards to outdoor dining is, I, I, I support this because in order for us to really see the vision come through, really to see it transpire to something beautiful and sustainable and great for our community, we have to move forward with this ordinance. I've been really disappointed in, in the way it's been looking out on the Expanade, and I really hope that with all of these, these, with this ordinance in place and with the prototypes and with the support of the city, that we can really make it look beautiful. And if it doesn't, we, like, we've all talked about that there's an out, there's a way that we could say, well, then you, you can't do this. And that's what makes me feel good about supporting this today. So I appreciate everyone's time and effort on this, and really look forward to seeing what will become of it. So with that, Councilmember Peterson, for, for Mount E State, we're looking at, I'm looking at the language on item, on the item eight B, and I think that is our formal, the formal way of introducing or to approving this. And I'm going to ask Samantha, our city attorney, to review that language with me. And it was clear to me that we would just approve ordinance two as presented by staff, and that was the motion on the table with the amendment from councilmembers, or excuse me, Vice Mayor Story. If you need more from us, please let me know. Katie, did you want to say something?
I just want to let you know, I have the, the one modification that I believe was requested, and I'd like to pull that up on the screen to make sure I got that correct.
Okay. We don't want to.
Bear with me on my mouth, please, slow. So what I heard from, in the, from the amendment was to add Capitola Avenue to the locations where sidewalk dining could occur within the existing village.
And that is to ensure Reece Deli would be included, as mentioned in your staff report earlier? Does that, does that cover it, is that what you need?
That would cover it, yes.
Okay. So I believe that is what the motion is on the table to accept ordinance two as presented by staff with that amendment to the sidewalk dining sections C, one, D, to include Capitola Avenue. Samantha, do you need me to read the item eight B, or is that okay for that amendment?
I'll just confirm it to make sure that we have the text regarding waiver for the, waiting for the reading in the, in the record. So I think that Councilmember Peterson's motion was to introduce by time along with waiting for the reading of the text, an ordinance of the city council repealing and replacing municipal code section seventeen point nine six point one seven zero and amending municipal code section seventeen point one twenty point zero three zero related to outdoor dining in public right of way with the amendment just articulated by Director Hurley. Did I get that right, Councilmember Peterson?
You took the words right out of my mouth, yeah, that's, that's exactly what I was trying to say.
Excellent, thanks.
Okay, then we have a first and a second on the two roll. Chloe, can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bertrand.
I agree.
Councilmember Peterson.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Story.
Hi.
Mayor Brooks.
Okay. Okay, now we're going to move on to the second portion of this item this evening regarding the temporary outdoor dining that is currently scheduled to end on January third. Katie, I'll turn this back over to you, if you have some slides to share with us.
No, I don't have any additional slides, so we're just looking for direction on the, the current emergency order is due to expire on January third, twenty twenty-two, and looking for direction on whether or not to extend.
Can you pull that slide up again in your presentation? You did have a timeline that stayed that went through for us.
Let's see.
And while Katie's doing that, Samantha, do I need to go up to questions to the public and back again, or does this just continue?
No, with the mayor's discretion, but the item, you have already gotten out public comments on the item, so you certainly, you do not need to do it again on this section of the item, but we're doing it on one item.
Okay. Councilmembers, I will go back to public for this item just in case someone forgot to mention anything, but, well, Katie's looking at that, actually, I'm going to wait for that to come up before I go to public comments.
So this slide shows how the ordinance will play out with the city council's timing, that most likely will have Coastal Commission's certification in March, the blanket coastal development permit in April, and hopefully, at that point, we can move forward with permits, so.
So just for clarification, since we've waived the second, or excuse me, yes, we, we're going to have a second reading on December ninth?
Yeah.
And then it'll go to Coastal Commission for March twenty twenty-two, and then hopefully all good by April. Any questions from council members? Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor, I just want to confirm, I always want to make sure that I'm understanding correctly before I make any motion or decision.
before I make any motion or decision. So if we were to theoretically extend the temporary program through April, then that would mean that at the end of April, or at some point in April, those who are temporary would have to pull down their temporary outdoor dining. Those who had gotten permits would be able to begin construction on their permanent three-year outdoor dining program. So there essentially would be that month of April in which the temporary stuff goes away, the permanent stuff can begin building, correct? Theoretically, we should have a blanket CDT approved by the planning commission in April and be able to open up our lottery.
Great, thank you.
And the temporary would have to go away in order to build the permit.
Okay, great, thank you. You're muted. Councilmember, you're muted.
I pushed the spacebar, I thought that worked. Okay, so once it goes into lottery, so this starts a clock. So how long will that extend? And is this enough time? That's, I just want to make sure the businesses have enough time. And that's why I mentioned a couple of things earlier in terms of trying to help them out, trying to get qualified contractors, because this is not their normal thing. I'm interested in trying to find this, would give the businesses that win the lottery, et cetera, to get everything together.
If we have the coastal development in hand in April, that will, the permits through the city are free, so we won't be holding them up at that point, they just need to apply and show where it will be. And the review process there will be very quick turnaround if it's a prototype design because the building department will have already listed us. So the turnaround there is fast. I would expect probably construction in like the later half of May, early June, based on this timeline. The only thing that would slow this down is that the coastal commission certification, if they ask for an extension beyond the 50 working days, that they're allowed to review the ordinance before it goes to hearing. So they do have the ability to ask for more time, then it could be up to another, up to a year. But where they review the ordinance prior to the planning commission, I don't foresee that happening to Capitola, but it's just maybe that that is the one hiccup that could occur between now and then.
Okay. Yeah, I don't want to extend too long because it extends into our busy period for the businesses. You know, they would like to get this done sooner than later for the summer break.
Thanks, Mayor Story.
Yeah, thank you once again, Mayor. Katie, just, I want to try to better understand the transition from the temporary to the prototype design. And once the prototypes are approved and the lottery is held or we determine that only restaurants want one, how long will they have to build the prototype and abandon the temporary?
So abandoning the temporary will be dependent on your decision tonight. So if the city council only, if the city council extends the temporary program through, say, the last day in March, then on equal first, all of the temporary outdoor dining have to be, have to be out of the street on that last day. And according to this timing, most likely, our blanket coastal development permit will go to planning commission in April. Our first meeting is the first Thursday of April, when that would go to planning commission. And then there's a, an appeal period for a CDT, it may have to, there'd be an appeal period for the coastal permit. So it would likely take effect in May of 2022. So I think the planning, the city council extending it either to March or late April would be a fair extension that wouldn't get in the way of the new, the new deck being built.
So would, is it preferable from a staff standpoint for us to set a hard date from when the temporary must be terminated? And then come back and revisit that if we get delayed? Or could we extend the temporary until the prototype is approved? And then give businesses those 30 days after they've been allotted a slot to build their permanent prototype design? Do you think what I'm trying to get to, or...
Yeah, I think it would be easier to extend it to a date certain and not tie it to future permits, just in case something were to happen with the permitting process with prototype. But it is very easy, as you know, we've continued the, we've extended the order several times. It's very easy for us to extend it. So I think that would be best. I think that Director Jesper has his hand raised, and he may have some input on this matter as well.
Okay, so I just wanted to point out that the policy that's included in the package, the administrative policy and how we're going to administer this, once we have the ordinances in place and the prototype approved, if we have to do a lottery, we have a 45-day period where we'll set applications to the lottery. That can be amended later on, as we've improved that policy, but that's what's in there now. And as far as construction, they are given six months from the time they're issued a permit to finish construction of their deck. Again, that's amendable, but that's one thing the policy at this time, so I just wanted to make a little bit of a point. Thank you.
Right. Thank you for that, Chris, definitely. Awesome. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Let's go ahead and go to public comment then, in regards to the extension of our temporary outdoor dining ordinance for those watching, that we've moved on to that item.
Mayor Brooks, we do have, we have some, one attendee wishing to speak on this item, and I think we have at least one email as well. Here's Linda Smith.
So thank you once again, Mayor Brooks, for the opportunity to speak. And I first want to tell you that I really appreciate the amount of deliberation and the very thoughtful questions and things that you, as councilmembers, have brought up this evening. And I really, really, my hat's off to all of you, thank you very much for your consideration. Memorial Day is in May, at the end of May, and that's a pretty active time down in the village. And what I think I'm hearing is that there's going to be a period of time where there will be no temporary dining available during the construction of the guys that win the lottery. So with the April date of having a prototype, my thought is just that I have had recent trouble getting, you know, contractors to work because of the amount of business due to seizing fire activity, and they're all just super, super busy. So until the restaurant owners know that they have spaces, that they've won lottery, if you will, it's going to be very hard for them to contact and line up somebody to build the right-sized parklet for them. So I would ask that maybe you lean towards letting the temporary extend a little bit farther into when you think you might have something, so that they're not down during those active weekends, you know, when we get a lot of people in the village over Memorial Day, for example, in May. And when I look at the timeline that you're discussing, that's what comes to my mind. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, Mayor Brooks, we have an email. I'm going to share my screen and try to read aloud the thing.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. Having previously weighed in on this temporary outdoor dining program, I do not intend to repeat myself other than to point out, this program was introduced to the Capitola community as a temporary measure in support of our business community. Residents and our visitors have given over valuable parking to business in the Capitola Village as a temporary measure in support of business. It is now time for business to return the favor and reopen this valuable parking to the residents and visitors of our beach community. I therefore urge the Capitola City Council to terminate this temporary emergency measure in favor of all members of our community, not just for the use of private business. With all due respect, signed. Our Eric Bosses, 40-year Capitola resident and homeowner.
We do not have any other attendees wishing to speak on this item, and we do not have any emails.
Thank you, Larry. Turn this back to council for further discussion. Any motion? Councilmember Peterson?
Thank you. First, I just want to clarify, unless I'm mistaken, and staff can let me know if I am, of course, but I believe that the city council approved a parklet program, a temporary, or no, temporary, a pilot parklet program back in 2015 or 2016, and it just turned out that no one ended up moving forward with it. So while this COVID-related outdoor dining program is meant to be temporary, in general, the city has plans to put some kind of outdoor dining parklet program together several years ago, I think, like right before I got elected in 2016. So this isn't unheard of for our city. So I just wanted to clarify that based on what we've heard from some of the public comments. Initially, my thought was to extend our temporary program to April, with the idea that if we were going to be getting our permanent program ready by then, then that would be kind of a good time for us to get rid of the temporary outdoor dining and give a couple months of kind of, I almost want to call it breathing room, for the businesses to start developing their permanent parklet. I'm interested in hearing from other councilmembers on their thoughts about whether it should extend to April or further out, based on the fact that, you know, we'll have that 45-day lottery and then six months from permit to construction. I think that six months isn't really our responsibility. If they, if the businesses have six months to build, if they finish it in 30 days, fantastic. If it takes them six months, we shouldn't need to extend a temporary program for them while they're doing that six months of construction. So that's my thought on that. But I am interested in hearing what the rest of the council thinks about potentially extending the temporary program and how long they'd like to. I was originally thinking April, but I'm curious, does do others talk on if it should go longer? Thank you.
Councilmember Bertrand?
I wasn't prepared for Kristen's questions, but I did have a question. So I know there was a design that Kristen talked about, we approved in earlier effort, and there was a design brought forward. Can that design be brought forward out as a potential design? I think it was submitted for the Crusio Wine Bar area. So that's my question of Katie. I don't know if that design's still available. And then I'll make some comments to Kristen's questions.
So, sorry.
Kristen echoing.
There you go. Okay. Currently, we have $10,000 to go out for a prototype design that would, you know, that's been allotted through the city council. There was a previous application on San Jose Avenue, the extension of Capitola Wine Bar, and then they pulled back their application. There was a recent public comment from the Wine Bar suggesting that there's a possibility of utilizing that design, and that's something we could look into further. I don't know if it would cost money, or, you know, we could look into it. But really, we do have the $10,000 to move forward with prototype designs. And we have, at this point, we reached out to a couple of different designers, landscape architects, and we have one proposal that we're thinking of moving ahead with. So that's where we stand today, but I could do some more, I could ask.
Yeah, I appreciate you asking because the design's already been done, and it didn't cost the city anything, and it might be a great way to start this program. So I am concerned that businesses won't be able to respond very fast. And as the public comment alluded to, it's difficult to get contractors right now. So I never did, maybe I just wasn't phrasing it correctly, I suggest that the city identified preferred contractors, but I'm thinking that it might help the residents, the businesses, if they had some options to choose from, you know, some suggestive options. Because I had two businesses before in San Francisco, and believe me, if I got thrown the opportunity to design a parklet or whatever you want to call it, and I was just busily running my business all day long, which was the case, I don't think I'd have much energy. And so any kind of help, and I think the comment that Memorial Day is the kickoff for a lot of businesses down in the Esplanade, you know, sort of points to the fact that it's going to be a very short timeline. And I think Kristen did mention that if they have to take down everything before they start building because they're not ready to launch, that's a consideration I'd like to see other members of the city council speak to as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor Story.
Thanks again, Mayor Brooks. And, you know, I guess I wanted to first start off by saying that, you know, what we're doing for this trial period with the prototype parklet, it's not just for the private business. The city has its face, both from a public health standpoint and from a financial standpoint, in making sure that we continue to thrive as a tourist community. That's the lifeblood of Capitola. It always has been. And the COVID was not, is not going to be a one-off event. As we've seen, it has continued to curtail and perpetuate. And as we've seen again with the new variant and being found in Capitola, or strike that, not Capitola, in California, I think it's incumbent upon us to continue this outdoor dining program. And, you know, the question is for, you know, what period of duration of time? And frankly, you know, it seems to me that we should continue it with all the information that's before us at this point until after Memorial Day, in other words, to June first. And I think that, I mean, ideally, at that point, we'll have the prototypes, hopefully we will have the lottery, we know, which restaurants and none of the details. And I think that they should be given after that 30 days to complete their prototype construction. And if they haven't, they can test it six months if they like, but then the temporary parklets would go live after 30 days. And they'd be given that a lot of time to do the construction. And so in terms of timing, I guess that's my thought about it, is to, I think we're typically continuing the parklet, the temporary parklet, until May 31st. And then assuming that everything else is in place, that... that they only, you know, they'd be given an additional thirty days if the prototype's not up, then the temporary goes away. So that's my thought, and I'll make that as a motion.
Okay, we have a first to it. On the table from Vice Mayor Story to extend the temporary outdoor ordinance to May 31st. And before, I just want to make a quick comment to just address what the question was from Councilmember Peterson. And, you know, honestly, all of these dates are so hypothetical at this point. You know, a lot can happen. We're riding on, we're waiting, we're going to have to wait for Coastal Commission, we're going to have to wait for a lot of stuff. And so I don't see that we need to really get too worried about the date. We know how easy it is to come back. We know how, you know, we can continue these conversations about it and aligning the right timeline for when we get there. So I don't have a problem with May 31st at all. I just want us to, I just want to acknowledge the fact that the dates presented today by staff were really just open-ended. And I see Katie nodding her head and waving for all kinds of guesses on how this will transpire. So that was my thoughts. Councilmember Peterson.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I agree. I am willing to second Vice Mayor Story's motion, but I also have a quick question I'm hoping Katie can clarify. So we're going to extend the temporary program to May 31st, and we are expecting people to build within the first thirty days, but we hope, you know, they can take the six months that they want. Do they start paying the cost for their parklet when they're in construction, since they're already taking up those parking spaces? Or do they not start paying their, essentially their rent on those spaces until the parklet opens?
I'm not 100% sure if we have that outlined in the administrative policy at this point.
Be included in the lease. And the lease, they would begin to need to begin paying when they take possession of the property, which would include construction.
Okay, good. That's what I was hoping. Because I'm willing to second the motion to extend out to May 31st. But I think if someone's going to take six months to build a parklet, then they should be paying for the lost revenue in that six months that we don't have those parking spaces. Yeah, okay. So I will second the motion.
Councilmember Bertrand.
Thank you, Mayor, for pointing out, probably what it was the other day, that these dates are quite changeable. I also have another question for Katie in that page. Is there a chance that this whole process could be force-armed? So since the design comes up ahead of time or Coastal Commission is really fast and he goes, "They want you so much," who knows? So we could go a little bit faster. Is that a possible?
There's always that possibility. I think right now, with the rate of development applications we've been seeing locally here in Capitola, I think, and I've heard from the other directors in the region, everyone's extremely busy right now with lots of planning applications. So I can't imagine that the Coastal Commission will expedite this through the process. There's a lot of new ordinances regarding housing that'll be going through the Coastal Commission as well because of the legislation. So I, there's always that chance, but I don't think it's ideal. It'd be great though. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a first and a second to extend the outdoor dining, to, excuse me, to extend the temporary outdoor dining program currently scheduled to end on January 3rd, 2022, to May 31st, 2022. Mayor Everlett, please.
Councilmember Bertrand.
I approve.
Councilmember Peterson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Story.
Aye.
Mayor Brooks.
Aye. Does I have the topic? Moving forward. Thank you, Katie. Unless you're staying on for the next item? No, okay. We get a nice break. All right, we're going to turn this back over to Larry Run item, the mandatory organic waste disposal reduction ordinance.
Okay, more fun. Let me share my screen.
And just for the record, we are welcoming back Councilmember Kaiser. Nice to be.
Share my screen. Don't want to share sound. I had a memory earlier. Okay, can you see my screen okay? Great. Before you, there is an ordinance to basically address some changes in state law. In 2016, the state of California passed SB 1383. We have discussed this a couple times with our waste disposal agreement last year as well as our updated franchise agreement, but the 1383 is driving a lot of changes in the industry. One of the big pieces of it is establishes methane reduction targets for jurisdictions as well as the state. And part of the requirement is local jurisdictions are required to adopt a mandatory organic production ordinance by January 1st, 2022. So enacting Chapter 804 of the municipal code, solid waste and edible food recovery, will allow the city with this requirement. The ordinance will require that source separation and collection of food, waste and scraps takes place. We will need to develop a program for monitoring compliance. We'll do this in conjunction with green waste as well as the Monterey Regional Waste Management District. Development of an edible food recovery program. This is going to be a county-wide program. You know, we, there's a lot of great partners in this for the counties. Second Harvest Food Bank, great there. They're doing quite a bit, and we're going to leverage that to make sure that we include every place that's required. In addition, we're going to need to conduct outreach and education. We're going to work in the green waste recovery on this. In fact, they should be getting out communications to all customers, either by the end of this week or very beginning of next week. And another part of this is we need to procure and track purchases of recycled paper, which we already do. We have an environmental purchasing policy. But we also need to add some things about purchasing recycled organic waste products. We are going to be bringing an updated policy to Council probably in January at some point to address the changes for this, but this is not part of the ordinance. Kind of overall, how this program is on the big picture is going to work. The food scraps will be included in everyone's green carts. You know, right now, the green carts are designed for kind of yard trimmings. The processing at Monterey Regional will include certain types of food scraps, and I'll go into that. This is going to be collected by green waste as part of the regular collection process. It's included in new franchise agreements. And included in that franchise agreement are the costs associated with that, and they were approved as part of the fruit collection rates. Kind of overall, what is going to be accepted at this point? Make sure we understand that this is a very, this is going to be changing over time. This is what currently can be accepted. You know, we all hope that, you know, other things will be added as we go along, but this is what's going to start. What they call all unpackaged food scraps. Food scraps is a term the state uses quite a bit, and this will be fruits and vegetables, cooked meats, cheese and dairy is a good important thing, not liquid. This is, you know, cottage cheese and things like that, but no milk or those sort of products. And all prepared food. Flowers and plants can go in, as well as coffee grounds. One type of paper they can process are coffee filters and tea bags. The list of not accepted right now is pretty large, but, you know, we want to make sure that, you know, as part of this, as we talk about monitoring, they're going to have to be very strict on what can go here. And as they find things that don't belong, they're going to have to go back to make sure the customers understand why. Other than the coffee filters and tea bags, no food packaging. The system cannot handle that at this point. Compostable plastics, I use the term in quotes because we, over the years, we've found out that term isn't a hard target. People have changed what that means. But for right now, they cannot go in the green mint. They're going to continue going trash, you know, the green mint. Plastic bags, liquids that we talked about, no raw meats. Other paper products cannot go in. Pet waste and kitty litter cannot go in. And of course, recycling trash cannot be included. So in front of you right now, the recommended actions are introduce the first reading by title only and wait in the reading of the text and ordinance repealing the current Capitola municipal code, Chapter 8.04, which is garbage, and enacting Chapter 8.04, solid waste and edible food recovery. And I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Larry. Councilmembers, any questions? Councilmember Bertrand.
Yeah, a question, Larry. Does this mean that processing is going to be different now for green waste? I've done various tours, I've done certain educational things in terms of recycling. And so is this going to be processed any differently, especially since you have meat in there and such?
Yeah, I mean, their processing is going to handle all this. So yes, I mean, you know, I can't give you the exact how it's being processed, but it is being collected. It'll be processed at Monterey Regional. And so whatever they're using to include this, yes, it'll end up being processed differently down there. But from the end user, it's going, it's going to be included with the yard trimmings.
Okay. So another question. I read the ordinance carefully, and it seems like home composting is allowed. There's no issues with that. So I know there's several people that do that. And another question was, there was something about burying stuff in odd places? There was a whole list of that. What is that all about?
You know, the model ordinance from the state included a lot of things we don't see, but it was one of the things that our city attorney firm, people helped us with this, included keeping that. Because we don't want people digging a hole in their yard like compost in a not correct manner. But that goes with any of the yard, with the trash waste. You know, we don't want people burying their own trash in their yard.
Well, anaerobic recycling is one way to do it, but it's not trash, it's organic.
Yeah, organics and anaerobic and organics are a problem. That's when the methane comes in.
So I can stop doing that? Sorry, I'm just saying. I didn't count my thoughts.
It's really bad if you live in an apartment. That's when they really get mad.
Oh, my gosh, guys. Funny. Okay, any other questions?
Screen two, yeah. I want to know who's the favorite food is logo. Anyway.
Okay. We're going to now move to public comments. Now is the time to raise your hands down below under reaction or if called in, who's darn night or star six, depending on if you're on a cell phone or phone, cell phone or landline, or you can email us directly, or public comment.
Hey, Ruth, I do not see any attendees with their hands raised on the side of them, and I do not have any emails on the side.
Okay, so we'll bring this back to Council for deliberation and a vote. Councilmember Bertrand.
Well, I knew that we approved the first reading of this ordinance. Is that the correct way, Mayor?
Sure, so we have a motion to approve the recommended actions to introduce the first reading by title only, waiting further for reading of the text and the ordinance repealing Capitola municipal code, Chapter 8.04, garbage, and enacting Chapter 8.04, solid waste and edible food recovery. So we have a first.
A second.
And we have a second for Vice Mayor Story. There's no other comments. Mayor Everlett, please.
Councilmember Bertrand.
I approve.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Story.
Aye.
Mayor Brooks.
Aye.
These items passed unanimously. Now we'll move on to item C, the new state of California Housing Legislation and Community Development Department Housing Work Plan. And tonight, we're just going to listen to staff's presentation on the recent housing legislation and the Community Development Department's work plan.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Brooks and Council. First, I'd like to take a minute to say thank you to Sam and Kurt and this presentation was actually put together by Leila. Leila on Sam's team, and she's going to be presenting tomorrow night to our Planning Commission a more in-depth presentation on the legislative update. I wanted to bring this to you tonight so you can understand just what's been happening at the state level and why in the new year I'm coming forward with RSPs for housing element update and several other new, so many ordinances. So with that, I'll jump in. This is going to be a high-level discussion. I don't know all of the new laws inside and out, so I'll keep it a high level. And we'll be bringing you more updates as we proceed and get into the details of the work next year. So 31 new housing regulations passed through California legislation. This evening, I'm going to give you a quick overview of SB 9, the ministerial project approval. There have been two changes in SB 8 and SB 10 towards streamlining of permit reviews and then changes for the updates to housing elements that will affect our timing of review for our sixth cycle, which is due in two years. So overall, two trends. The legislature was, the legislation was very friendly towards multifamily residential. And this trend is expected to increase in the future, affordability and increased inventory and also equity in housing. So SB 9, I'm sure you've all seen the headlines in newspapers talking about SB 9. This is a ministerial approval, and it's applicable in our single-family zoning district. Within SB 9, a property owner may create two lots, with up to two units on each lot. So our single-family zoning, as we know it, probably needs a new change because every lot can be divided into two lots and have two units on each lot. There are, our development standards will have to permit new units that have setbacks of up to four feet from the rear side property lines, up to one parking space per unit, zero, to the close proximity transit. Much required that rentals be longer than thirty days with utilizing this new methodology in a vacation home. And we can set standards for a minimum or actually allow children to have eight hundred square feet. So in the new year, how would we treat a new single-family home in the R1 zone that requires a design permit to TC? We can only apply the objective development standard. So we're looking at height, setbacks, floor area ratio, and parking. When the planning commission reviews a new home, it's not an addition. The additions still have the same review they had a new home. Most of our city's design permit criteria is discretionary and could not be reviewed, such as protecting privacy, compatibility with the neighborhood looking field. Those standards could not be applied. So just the objective standards that are measurable. For next steps, we are prepared to report an update to our zoning code and municipal code to update not only the single-family zoning district, but also our subdivision regulation. We'll outline the application review process and develop objective development standards, which in a minimum could include a back from four footers to eight hundred square feet, the four-foot setback, and we can get into specifics of materials and more. So that's what we've got coming to you in the new year. SB 8 is another bill that passed. In event the housing rights is active, that's the 330, which is all about streamlining of affordable housing projects. So it was due to expire, and now it's been extended to January 1st, 2020. And I won't give into too much detail here, but in the future, there's no municipal code changes that need to take place, but we are going to increase our tracking of any affordable housing projects to make sure we're in compliance. housing projects to make sure we're in compliance with the streamlining that is required under SB 8. And then AV 1398, this is an update to our requirements for the housing element. And as you all know, the term of RENA numbers comes up often. Currently, we have, we're required to build 101, I'll say, 43 units under our RENA numbers. The numbers, as we've been getting, the numbers originally came up for our RENA count to be somewhere in 700. More recently, in a draft they published, we're seeing the number get even higher, close to a little over 1,000 for RENA. So this is going to be a state undertaking in the next two years of identifying sites for future affordable housing units. And if we don't have enough sites available to accommodate RENA numbers, our housing element has to specify specific areas for rezoning. And the rezoning under this new law will be required to happen in three years. So we'll have to identify those sites if we don't have enough, and then rezone those sites within three years for increased density. And then if we fail to get our housing element adopted on time, it's labor, certified, then that timing that the three years is allowed for the rezoning drops down and gets reduced to one year. So, and also the rezoned site must allow for housing development, 20% lower income housing, that's a permitted use. And there's no C Core review, and also it would be limited to objective design standards. So we need to start working on our housing update, our housing element update immediately, and make sure that we have it certified in time to get out of a time frame, so things that need to occur. Our, so next step is our draft housing element update. The HCD certification has to, we have to submit by December of 2023. And then once they've given us comments, the city council has to adopt within 120 days of the HCD certification. So our work plan, we're looking at, currently, we've been, I've been working with Ben Noble Planning on the SB 2 grant money that we received for draft ordinance for objective standards for multifamily. Our housing element, I'd like to launch this in January of 2022 and put out a request for proposals. And then for SB 9, the draft ordinance, single-family objective standards, that's something that Sam's team is prepared to start helping us with at the onset of the new year, and have a draft in early 2022. So here's the timeline of one of the multifamily objective standards. It typically takes any ordinance from the first time we bring it to planning commission to the time we get certified by the council commission, about six months for that entire process. So what we're looking at for multifamily objective standards and the single-family objective standards, likely have been adoption by the end of summer, early fall quarter, the third quarter of 2022. And then for the housing element update, that's going to take up to two years. So I think we're going to have our work cut out there in terms of finding space for all of the new RENA requirements. So I just wanted to bring this forward to give you an idea of when you see me in January, and I'm asking, when we're starting to move ahead, asking to endeavor, or to bring you in the loop, and also be able to respond to community concerns because that SB 9 is being touched well frequently. And with that, that concludes my presentation this evening, and I appreciate your time. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Katie. Councilmembers, any questions for Katie tonight? Okay, seeing none. Oh, Councilmember Bertrand.
So since this is the law right now, I guess our current housing element is completely out of date.
No, right now, we're in the fifth cycle of our housing element, and it will, we need to adopt the next housing element. We need to submit it to HCD by December of 2023. So we're in compliance currently, and to stay in compliance, we'll need to make sure to be the top line for 2023. They're eight-year cycles, the housing elements.
No, what I mean is, yeah, we have an eight-year cyclone housing, but it seems like if we're, I mean, because of these law changes, my question basically is, it seems that certain elements and housing elements probably are not in compliance with the current law.
So right now, our, I would say our zoning code is not up to date with the new laws, but we're not out of compliance. If an application comes in, we'll have to follow, we'll have to follow state law, but there's, within SB 9, there's no requirement, and we have an updated ordinance by a date certain, or any updated ordinance, there's no requirement. We, that was different with the secondary dwelling units a couple of years back. We did have to, there was a, we did need to bring our zoning code into compliance.
Okay, I got it.
Okay, unless this guy had anything else to the public, we'll have to see if anyone has any comments on this item before we adjourn.
Hey, Brooks, I do not see any answers on this item, and we don't have any emails on the side of it.
Okay, so we'll bring this back to council, Councilmember Bertrand.
Yeah, Steve, is that you with the favorite moon logo? Just trying to understand.
That was a picture, yeah.
That's way cool, Steve.
Yeah, it's me.
That is really cool. I wouldn't have known, except for my daughter, she had to tell me, educate me, excuse me.
Councilmember Peterson.
Uh, thank you. I just want to say thank you to Katie for, and you mentioned that Sam's team had brought this forward as well, so thank you to both of you. These issues are why in the last couple meetings, I've kind of made a point of bringing up that AMAG's working on RENA numbers, and these things are happening. Even when I was running for reelection last year, I remember someone said they weren't going to vote for me because, you know, I was, I was supporting this idea of destroying single-family zoning, when really you could just see it coming ahead of time, that it was happening in the state legislature, that there wasn't going to be anything that we could do about this, that it was, it was in this way. And so I appreciate that you're bringing this forward, and I will continue to mention it as well throughout, I'm sure, my next couple years on council, because I'm pretty much calling it now, that the first time someone wants to build a duplex in a place that there used to be a single-family home, people are going to crawl out of the woodworks and say that we're destroying their single-family neighborhood. And so I'm just going to keep, you know, mentioning it as often as possible that this is happening. There's not a lot that we can do about it. It is important that we address the housing crisis, but at the same time, it's going to be really difficult, and the way that these things are happening are not necessarily within our control, although we do have opportunities to get feedback, and I think we should as often as possible. So again, just thank you so much, Katie, and our city attorney, Sam, thank you so much for the work that you're doing to bring this to our attention, and to continue to address these issues as they come forward.
Okay.
We have one more question, Mayor.
Oh, thanks.
Yeah, yeah, well, I was reviewing this, I wrote this down, I forgot to ask Katie. So I think on 48th, we have multi-unit housing right now that's sort of been, you know, we're supposed to get rid of it, but according to these rules, you can't tear multi-unit housing down, no.
Yeah, there is protections of not downzoning properties that have a significant residential density, so.
So we will have to change our zoning laws for those guys, because there was supposedly a limit, and we're supposed to do a bunch of things as time went on, but now that should be taken off, I think.
Yes, you know, you bring up a good point. We do have standards in our non-conformant section of our zoning code that were not, that was one section that was not updated in the zoning code update due to needing to work through C-level rise challenges. But there are standards tied to the R1 for bringing multifamily into compliance. We can no longer, we cannot enforce that section of our code, because that's not in compliance with state law.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, well, that brings us to item 26, on the agenda this evening, which is adjournment. Katie, staff, department heads, council members, thank you so much for joining us this evening. Have a wonderful night, and we'll see you on December 9th, which is going to be a fun day. See you then.
I might be in Denver, no, okay. See you later. Thank you very much, wonderfully.
Goodbye.